Okay, all right, I'll open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. It is February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. The time is seven oh one P M. Uh, tonight's meeting is held fully virtual due to inclement weather. Town Hall has been closed for the day. Uh, and we reposted a few days ago in accordance with state law, um, which allows us to have a fully virtual meeting tonight. Uh, we have a few items on the agenda. Um, let's, let's go to item two, two point one, which is uh, to continue the hearing for the special permit request for seventy six Powder Mill Road.
Uh, no, we're gonna withdraw, Mr. Chair.
Do we don't need to open up and continue? We can just withdraw?
Um, you can. Yeah, you probably, I don't know. I honestly don't know on that one. I would say you're right. Open it. And then I can give you the.
So I just, I just continued that hearing. Uh, and there's a request bill for withdrawal. Can you just lay us out the options that we have with the redraw request?
Yes, if you remember, we approved the special permit for automobile repair at seventy six A Powder Mill. Last month, um, it was part of it, uh, two component application. One application was for the, the vehicle repair, which this board approved separated. The second was for, um, a non-conforming sign to reuse a non-conforming uh, sign for a, a new advertisement. The issue came that, um, the, the town DPW is having, um, the area adjacent two seventy six A Powder Mill, um, resurveyed for the new, um, pump station improvements, and it turns out that the sign appears to be located on town land. Now, if that's the case, that's not necessarily a deal breaker for the applicant, but it does mean that this board doesn't have jurisdiction that the select board will have jurisdiction. Um, this is a new business starting out and, um, they were a bit confused by the process, as you can imagine. I recommend that a denial of this permit would be to their detriment in the future, possibly if it turns out that a new survey indicates they're located on private property, but because it's it's not clear, um, I recommended that they request a withdrawal from this board. A withdrawal without prejudice, which would allow them if a, um, i- if a survey or, or you something that's a documented locational um, indicator of the sign emerges and they can do it. They can show that it is in private property. They could come back to this board and request the change. So what I am asking this board to do is accept the withdrawal, um, without prejudice. So it's, it's just, okay. You can go ahead, and if they get their survey that shows that it is in fact on uh, private property, then they come back and there's no prejudice of the board if they do. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions on that from a procedural standpoint? Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I have several questions. So let's say it's on town property. And they don't wanna go forward with, uh, with, with the sign. Um, is there, what's the process to remove the post from the town property?
I don't know. That would be, uh, DPW and, um, there are in the expansion and the improvements of the lift station there, for the pump station, um, things will be, I think the road will have to be expanded. I think that would result in removal of the sign. But I don't know that for certain. Uh, that's something I'll have to check on as you know, facts come available. It certainly wouldn't be under my jurisdiction or the board's jurisdiction if it's on town land. It would. I guess it would be under the select board's jurisdiction rather than DPW's, but I've never encountered this. I don't know exactly.
Uh, any other questions from the board? Um, I'm happy to entertain a motion, but.
I'll make a motion to withdraw this portion of their application without prejudice.
I'll check on that.
Thank you both. Bill, I think that that works for a motion.
Yeah, you're approve, you're approving their withdrawal of the application without their jurisdiction.
That's what I, yeah, making a motion for.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Uh, I'll take a roll call. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Uh, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's five zero bill to approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
All right, thank you, board.
Hmm?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay.
Um, any other further correspondence on that bill or is that, or is that whole thing put, put to bed now?
Put to bed.
Okay. Okay, let's, um, let's continue item. Sorry, the, the, the way we have, and I'll share my screen, the way we have these things itemized is a little, um, little tricky for me. So the way these things are itemized is we have, um, item two, item two point one, which is, which we just covered, seventy six.
Yeah, two point two.
What would you call this? Two point one?
Yeah, we were this is the brand new website.
Yeah.
And nobody understands the exacts.
Okay.
Um, we are making problems with sequencing of the numbers, but there.
That's fine. We'll call it this case. We'll call it two point two. We'll, we'll add the, the two ones together. How about that? This will be two point.
One point one, yeah.
Okay, then we'll, we'll continue the hearing for the accessory home based business zoning bylaw that we've discussed previously. Uh, this is continued from the February fourteenth meeting. Um, during the meeting, we had a number of, uh, we, we had public comment that we took, public comment that we closed, and then uh, board discussion that followed that. And I believe that culminated in additional changes and updates, and I think it'd be helpful to walk the board through all those again. Do you have a Bill Crenshaw and Bill Nims, or do you have a different approach, or does that make sense?
Oh. Uh, Bill, a Crenshaw, if you like, what I could do would be open up the Word version. Uh, the, the only, um, changes that were made, I think, were to, uh, eight point three, which is now version twenty, and I could, even though we had the PDF here, I could open up the Word versions. So if the board wanted to make any adjustments, they could, but I'll defer to you, Bill Crenshaw.
Uh, doesn't matter to me. I mean, the, the updated changes are very.
All right. I'll open, I'll open this one.
Tell you what, I have it open, Bill, so I'm happy to do it, if that's, if you're okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so I took this from the agenda, which is, I think, the right location to, to write filed to open up, correct?
No, that would, that would not be it. That's the old one that we looked at before.
Okay, so not the one I opened up from here.
It should be the one I, I put it up there, version twenty.
I, so Bill Crenshaw, I think Bill Nims are just updated this list, I believe, recently.
Yeah, but there should be like five words that changed between last time. The, what you showed us was essentially a lot of stuff we covered last time.
So.
Oh, I did keep everything in from last time. Yes, I did.
Oh, well.
I, I, I took out the one, oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I, I think we can do this, though, because there's, it's color coded, so I think we can see the additional changes.
Okay.
But we can go through it all.
Okay, so, um, if we can go to eight, three, three, four, that's the first change. Eight, three, three, four.
Three, three. Here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that line, the, the only change from last time is the delete the word excessive because it's somewhat redundant in that sentence since it's all talking about touch metal stuff.
And, and, and Bob, was this part of the comment that you made as well?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
So that, that's the only change there.
Mm-hmm.
The next one would be on eight, three, four, five. And this one doesn't actually show the markup, but that sentence used to say customers, clients, patients, students, or other visitors. And based on the discussion, uh, the last meeting, the word visitor was changed to patron, so it wouldn't accidentally include friends and family visiting, talking about the business. And, and that word change, um, changing the word visitor to patrons and that, that use is, is, uh, happens to other places that we'll get to. Um, when you go to eight, three, six. Uh, eight, three, six, um, in that first blue paragraph, yeah, yeah. First blue paragraph, the red word detrimental. Um, that word used to be undesirable and just got changed to detrimental. The same change was made in the next paragraph. So those two words, just changing the word from undesirable to detrimental. Um, and then at the beginning of the next page, there's a subsection E and some section G with changes up right there. And so that's the change, the word visitor to patron. And also right there, which is word visitor to patron.
Yep, I see it in three locations here.
And that's the only difference from what we talked about last time.
Hmm, okay. Um, I see this is was changed to visitor to patron to just for.
Sorry, I missed that one.
That's okay. That is under eight, three, seven, one.
Okay, I don't suppose it matters, but okay.
Okay. Um, I know, Bob, you, you provided input as well. Was, were your comments incorporated addressed? Did we miss anything? Is there anything you would like to discuss, brother?
There was just one paragraph in eight, three, six, three, I believe. Three, six. Oh, here in that eight, three, six, I'm looking at three and the second blue paragraph.
Hmm.
And, you know, when I, when I read it, it just didn't, it wasn't clear to me. So, um, I, if it's clear or false, then, you know, then, then fine, but, um, it's a, it's a really long sentence. Oh, I guess it's two sentences. Did this change? The, the findings shall consider the effects of the location, size, terrain, or other features of the property and the operations, the business activity on mitigating potentially detrimental impacts. The, all right, so you're gonna consider the effects of certain things on mitigating potentially detrimental impacts. It just struck me as an awkward sentence. And then it says, the, um, Special Permacrancing Authority may also include as part of the Special Permac specific conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time or use necessary to mitigate undesirable impacts on each characteristics. And so what I, yeah, I just finished, Bill, was whether um, the word mitigate should say to prevent, you know, undesirable impacts and want to, you know, um, because you can mitigate something to make it less, but it may not prevent the adverse impact. And so that's what I was thinking. That's what my comment was. And, um, I, when I looked at eight point three, three, like, um, if that applies here, and I think it does by the first sentence, then I would read eight point three, three as giving me the comfort that, yes, you prevent you know, the adverse impacts from occurring, not just mitigating them. So I just wanted to be clear that what you're, you're saying is, you know, um, um, but you have to meet the standard in eight, three, three, regardless of whether um, you're a type A or a type B.
Okay, let's look at eight, three, three, so we can just get the holistic aspect of this. Um, are you referring to all of eight, three, three, Bob?
Yeah, and you see the criteria shall apply to both type A and type B.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, Bill Nims, or you, you wanted to, to, to add to this discussion? What were your thoughts?
No, 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 I, I am just trying to find out where Bob is talking about on the second one. I got the first prevent, but I'm not sure.
So let's see, I see, I, I believe, Bob, you're, you're talking about this right here, is part of your first comment about um, the nomenclature being unclear.
Well, I thought, I found that to be an awkward sentence. I wasn't really comfortable with what it said, but if, if if others think they understand what the intent is, then I just wanna know that. Because I would read.
If I could add, I mean, granted, that's an awkward sentence, awkward paragraph, but that's the end result of the Z B A reps version of it. So I would lean towards since Z B A has to deal with it. I'll take their language. Um, the, the other point I'd like to highlight is that you know, like all zoning special permits, it's not an absolute no on any impact, even negligible ones. It has some flexibility, so it's it's not preventing adverse impacts, no matter how little ever. It allows the Z B A some lenience to say that, you know, the, the basic finding of a special permit is that the good outweighs the bad.
What I'm hearing what I'm hearing from Bob, Bob, what I'm hearing from you is I, I, and I, I think I get, I, I think I hear what you're saying, like, when we use the word detrimental impact. I think Bob, what you're saying is that we want to avoid detrimental impact. Um, but maybe if the wording was, say, mitigating impacts, that would be different than mitigating the detrimental impacts. Does, is that kinda where you're headed with this?
That, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so I, I get.
That you prevent the detrimental impact from happening. You don't allow a detrimental impact. There can be an impact, but once it becomes detrimental, then it's not allowed.
So I, I kinda get that, like, and I'm, and I, and I, and I think Bill Crenshaw has a good point, too, like, we want to, you know, the zoning board has a more intimate sort of view on this and the sort of language they want. And also, Bill Crenshaw has a good point about just zoning regs in general, how we, you know, we're not in the business of saying there is no impact, but that we mitigate certain aspects, and that's part of the special permit itself, and that's the whole vehicle for the special permit. So I'm wondering if there's, there's a way to balance this and have it say something closer to potential, you know, mitigating potential impacts or things, something like that. Is the, Bill Crenshaw, is the word detrimental important here?
Well, it was undesirable, but it was.
Yeah.
The edit was made because Bob wanted detrimental.
And I think detrimental is a, Bob, probably a better sort of regulatory term than undesirable, I, I think is part of the point here, too, right?
Yeah, I was just, when I made the suggestion that we just be consistent with what eight, three, three said, we'll use the word detrimental. So rather than have multiple standards, it's just have one standard, and I was comfortable with detrimental. So.
You're talking about consistency throughout the document. Okay, so, so there's, so, uh, that makes sense to me. Bob's comment about consistency applies for sure. So, but the question I think still is, still remains is is detrimental, are we, I agree, there's, I agree that with the concept that we're not in the business of mitigating detrimental impact. We should, you know, special permits should not allow detrimental impact to occur. So would is, is the terminology mitigating impacts?
Well, I think you could, I, I, I mean, I think the substitution of reduces or prevents would take care of, but these, um, concerns. So if it read only if the special permacraining authority finds, uh, oh, I see it, finds that prevent. Yeah, I see it. There's a typo in there. But essentially that we that the, uh, criteria re, that it reduces potentially detrimental impacts, but this is this is a typo here. I can see that we uh, have in here. So I think it's just a question of wording, Bob.
Yeah, I always change the word from detrimental just to negative.
No, it's not there, Bill. It's before we get there.
No, so Bill, so Bill, Bill Crenshaw just proposed to change the word detrimental to negative. So this would read potentially negative impacts. And this would read on mitigating potentially negative impacts. Because detrimental, I think is carrying a lot, carrying um, implies um, some serious types of impacts.
On eight, three, six, three, can you make it a little bigger, Chris, please?
Oh, of course, sorry, everybody. I can see things from my screen differently than you.
Um, no, so the, okay, the findings shall consider the effects of the location, size, terrain, or other features of the property and the operations of the business activity on mitigating, that's what's, it's, I'm saying on mitigating, it doesn't read right. That's, Bob's right. That's where it's awkward. It is awkward.
And we can address the awkwardness, but I think the context of Bob's comments are more imperative here, so. Uh, if we, if this was, we can deal with the awkwardness for now, but if this were read more like on mitigating negative, on potentially negative impacts, would that, would that still, would that align with the zoning board's considerations? Does that align with the intent here?
I should think so. I mean, ten point four uses the word negative.
What do you think, Bob, from your perspective?
Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that we have, that there's an agreement on what the concept is. So in order to come up with words, I think we first need to make sure that we agree with the concept is. And so, um, to, in my way of thinking, the concept was that the ZBA would prevent a home-based business from causing a detrimental impact to the neighborhood. Right? And so I guess what I'm asking is, would the ZBA ever allow a detrimental impact?
Well, I think that that's part of the broadness of the language, right? Especially the first paragraph talking about sorry, location, size, terrain, right? So Chris, can you scroll down to A through N? Let's say that there's a business. Scroll down some more. Those ones aren't that bad. Let's say that there's a business hmm, using more than one on street parking space, right? Uh, that could definitely be seen as negative or detrimental, right? Causing harm to the surrounding neighborhood. But for example, that first paragraph, let's say that they live in one of the few large properties in Maynard that a but concert, I, uh, I don't know. You know, I, I think the location of the property, right, would, would, maybe we wouldn't care as much about mitigating that. I realize that that would be a very specific set of circumstances, but that's the whole point of the board looking at it, right? That there are certain things in this list that either based on the location, size, terrain of the property, or the SPGA's opinion, hmm, maybe mitigation is enough, or maybe it's not of concern. So I do understand the desire to prohibit instead of mitigate, but at the same time, I do feel like there are going to be situations that arise where prohibition is not necessary.
So I agree with that, Natalie, but when I read the first sentence, you know, that I, and I read, read it a lot, you know, the findings shall consider, I didn't know what that was really saying.
Yes, I agree. I'm, I'm trying to think of how it could be phrased differently. Um.
Well, I think, I think what would reduce, what would, uh, get the point across, the findings shall consider the effects of the, you know, location, size, and so on, so much. But then what you're trying to say is while reducing potentially detrimental impacts, because what Bill says is correct, that, you know, what could, you're not saying you're going to eliminate every detrimental impact. Some guy oh, could be mowing their lawn on, you know, seven o'clock on a Saturday morning, and that may be considered detrimental. But, but I think read, you know, that, that the intent is to reduce potentially detrimental impact.
So let's go, let's go back, let's go back to Bob's question about would the zoning board allow a detrimental impact? Cause I think that helps, might help clarify. And I mean, this might be a semantic sort of argument, but um, Bill, does the zone, does the zoning board allow detrimental impacts to occur under special permits?
Well, I think that.
Yeah, so that's kind of the crux of this. Like if they don't, then we're not, we're not mitigating detrimental impacts. We're not allowing detrimental impacts to occur.
Everybody's definition of detrimental is going to be different, you know?
That, that, that's why I said it was semantical. Yes, well, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So with the vote, the zoning board, for example, we granted the variance last night. Okay, the variance was to allow reconstruction of a garage on a, um, like a forty, five hundred square foot lot where the minimum lot size for that district is seven thousand square feet. Every other surrounding property had an undersized lot and a garage on, on their site. The board determined that it was no more detrimental than the uh, surrounding properties, for example. So in that case, you're using it, it's, it, you know, it, it's, it is semantics, but it also is establishing a, a baseline that, you know, okay, here is the request. If the request was not detrimental at all, why would it be prohibited by the zoning code? You know?
Yeah, and, and we're trying to balance this, cause like.
Right, right.
Well, I think, I think.
Common sense balancing, right?
What, what I hear from, from Bob's comment, and, and Bob, please correct me if I'm wrong, but like, if we, instead of detrimental, if we put this in like bad impact, moderate impact, we want to prevent bad impact and maybe, maybe mitigate or allow some moderate impact to occur. Right? So there's some semantics here. Is det, does detrimental mean bad, or does it just mean any type of impact?
So here's, here's the bottom line. Like, I don't think the ZBA should be allowing a nuisance activity to occur. A nuisance is an unreasonable use of the property. And I don't think that the ZBA would want to allow a nuisance to occur. So that's like in the, the gradation of things. Now, I'm looking at, you know, the bad, you know, the, the really bad stuff that you, you really can't do anything about. And so if you can't do anything about it, then you say no. Right?
Hmm.
So I don't read this as allowing the ZBA to say no if there's something that's going to cause a nuisance condition. So that's why I was just trying to, like, understand when I looked at eight, three, three, it seems to me that, you know, the ZBA can say no. And so I look at eight, three, six, and I'm saying, well, does that mean they can't say no? And, you know, so that's, that's what I was struggling with because, you know.
Can I make a proposal?
Sure.
I, I, and I'm thinking, the more I think about this, I think the section want, what, what that paragraph wants to do is simply reference what's below. We already cover the concept in eight, eight, three, three up above about, we can just go to it.
Right.
So that, this, this is the criteria that applies to A and B.
Yep. And if you look at four, before you scroll down.
Yep.
No equipment or process shall be used in the business that creates noise, vibration, glare, et cetera, detrimental to the safety. Peace, comfort, and general welfare. So to me, that's the standard. I can live with that standard.
Yeah, and this is, and this is redundant.
Well, what, what, can I, can I, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Wouldn't it be problematic?
Like, can you, can you elaborate on it?
Like, a problematic, um, it would be more than, instead of detrimental impact, it'd be a problematic impact.
Oh, you're proposing a word choice. Okay, um.
Because it would be a problem. It's more than detrimental that we'd have to all agree upon.
Right, and that's where we're struggling. We're struggling, I think we're struggling with, with, you know, what do these word choices mean?
Cause detrimental is pretty strong. I mean, it's.
Right, and some of us here it has very strong in it. Some of us hear the word just detrimental and think like, that is very bad.
Right.
Um, other of us, like Bill Nemser, who's done zoning law for a while, has a more technical definition probably of what detrimental means. Um, so, but what, what I'm thinking is, and just hear me out for a second, is that this may be redundant since it's covered up above. And what we don't want in our zoning is redundancy, because that adds confusion. We want to say what we want to say once and say it clearly. So would, would this, would these three blue paragraphs be better if it just focuses on referencing the list of A through N instead of reiterating? But it maybe you could say something like the special permit, um, the zoning board or the SPJA shall consider these effects as it relates to, you know, A through N. And maybe that's all it needs to say?
So, so Chris, this is not, this is not defining the primary special permit criteria. This is defining a secondary special permit criteria for these triggers. And there's no relation between the reference here to use of an accessory building to any other section in the document. This is where they say, sure, an accessory building's fine because you got this big, huge lot and there's nobody anywhere near it. Or, you know, it's down the hill and nobody can say whatever. It, it's the thing that gives them the flexibility to make the, the call on, you know, whether these triggers are fine, because most of them are. These, these are just things, it's like, okay, it's time to look at it, make sure it's okay. And that language that they've chosen is the language that justifies them saying it's okay.
Can I make a proposal? In both of these blue paragraphs, instead of saying would be mitigated or mitigating potentially blah, 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 can we say preventing or mitigating?
All right, can I put another proposal on the table, Natalie, too?
Let's do it.
Um, we are, with the first sentence, just strike out the effects of, so we say the, the findings shall consider the location, size, terrain, or other features of the property. Period.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, oh, Bob, wow.
I mean, keep, keep going, Bob. What else is he gonna say? Let's not make the change, Jesus.
Hang on, Chris is taking it away.
Um, sorry, I'll put it back up what I was trying to do.
What do you want to say?
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting into a version where I can edit it.
Are you editing it, Chris?
Um, I can, so it can be seen, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll leave it to you to edit then.
All right, the findings shall consider the location. So strike the effects of.
Chris, can you, can you first just accept everything so we can, and then redline the changes? Then he's talking about.
You know what I can do? I can put it into a Word document and do that. Unless, unless Bill has the word document open.
I have the word document open.
Would you rather share than Bill?
Yeah, well, you got it, thanks.
Yeah, I'll, I will stop sharing.
Well, please, let's not, let's not edit the actual Word document.
Yeah, Bill's right. We just spent an hour and a half, right, Ed? Go, let's go back to Chris's.
This, this has to go.
I can, I can do this.
To, to the town meeting, so we gotta make sure we don't throw a typo in there.
I can, I can edit this, um, just fine.
Okay.
Okay, so how about the, okay, the findings shall consider the location, size, um, terrain, or other features of the property, and the effects of operations of the business activity.
Okay, I know you can't see it, but it's, it's a carrot that gets placed in there and the effects of
the operations of the business activity.
Mm-hmm.
And then say, and put in a period. So it's just, that's right. And then, um, so the SPJA may also include, I, I'm fine with that next sentence. May include safeguards, conditions. So you're going to consider the location, size, terrain, going to consider the effects of the operations. And you'll include whatever conditions are necessary.
Um, this highlighted word is undesirable. Should that get changed now to something else?
To mitigate, um, um, all right, just, you could say to mitigate or, or prevent. No, I don't want to say, oh, I would just say, you know, to, to.
Maybe undesirable is the right word choice here.
I, I think there are things in A through N that are not inherently negative or detrimental or undesirable, so.
Can, can you elaborate what you mean by that?
I feel like the use of an accessory building is one of the things listed in A through N, and I think it should be under consideration. I do not find the use of an accessory building inherently a negative part of a home-based business, right?
Right.
I also like the idea of mitigation being left in there because let's say you do a really, you use your shed and it's really ugly and the neighbors think it's detrimental, but the zoning board can say you gotta put a new door on it, so your neighbors don't have to look at it. That's mitigating it, right, or something, I guess, but it's still using the shed. I'm trying to think of theoreticals, but I think inherently everything in A through N is not detrimental or causing harm or undesirable. It's something that just needs to be considered.
I, I think we can strike undesirable because this is referencing, you know, the SPJA may include as part of the special permit, specific conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time or use necessary to mitigate impacts of each characteristic. It doesn't need to be undesirable, because it's referencing how we, how we, how we approach this anyways.
I still say we, we do time or use necessary to prevent or mitigate impacts of each characteristic. Because as Bob said, give them the broad strokes in either direction, right?
So you said time use necessary to mitigate impacts of each characteristic?
Prevent or mitigate.
Prevent or mitigate. We try to avoid the, the or in, in, in zoning law, um, when we can.
Well, I don't want it to just be mitigate, and I don't want it to just be prevent. So if there's another way of saying it, that's fine, but.
That's what we're struggling with.
What, uh, all right, would you consider to prevent adverse impacts?
No.
Okay.
Why is the language too strong in your mind when we use the word adverse?
How about any adverse impact? Or any potential adverse impacts? Cause it's right, because most of these things are like nine times out of 10, it's no big deal.
Right.
I guess so, but I guess I, I just feel like people are going to again, keep, I mean, it's. it's gonna be the zoning board's choice, what is an adverse impact, right? I also think we shouldn't use adverse if we're trying to cut down the number of words, undesirable, detrimental, adverse, we don't need that one too.
What, what if we struck that whole sentence?
That's what I was thinking, but.
What, which whole sentence?
That's three seconds.
Uh, no, they, they were rather adamant that that stay in.
No, I think that clearly spells out to people who might be applying that they, it's not a yes or no, that the SPJA can also include these specific things.
That also uses phrasing from the state statute that authorizes zoning laws.
Is mitigate undesirable impact in the state, in the state?
No, the conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time and use.
I was hoping.
All right, how about timely use, then comma, as necessary?
How, how about, how about this, um, on timer use, uh, necessary to come comply with, I'm not gonna get this right, guys, but maybe totally different frame of thinking here, on timer use necessary to come comply with the permit criteria, or comply with the purpose of this special permit, or something like that.
Or to comply with eight point three three and eight point.
Some, something like that, so we're, so we're not just regurgitating, you know, um, I don't know, so, so we can get away from the qualitative language. I don't know, Bill Crenshaw, you're, you're way more, been way more into this. Do, do you see what I'm trying to get at? Bill's, I'm gonna get Bill Crenshaw frustrated.
Yeah, um, trying to, trying to keep this even happier, um.
Yeah, no, we wanna do that too, so, that has to stay on the table.
How about we say, say, timer use, um, for each characteristic, and we just, we leave the needed to mitigate, because frankly, those state statutes doesn't use word mitigate.
So, the SP, the SPJA may also include, as part of the special permit, specific conci- conditions, safeguards, and limitations on timer use regard, regarding.
For each for each of the characteristics, or something.
For each characteristic.
Or any, on, on time or use, you can include conditions, safeguards, and limitations for each characteristic. Because it may not be timer use. Maybe something else.
Oh, just condition safeguards and limitations on each characteristic?
Yes.
What do you guys think about that?
Well, actually, I think, having double check, I expect there should be a comma after safeguards. So, it's conditions, which is one thing, safeguards, which is another, and limitations on time and use, which is a third.
Yep.
So, and that is the phrase that leads off the section of Mass General Law that talks about a special permit.
So, timer uses in Master General Law, so, and we're trying to mimic that, so. I think, Bob, if we,
Okay.
If we put those two comments together, yours and Bill Crenshaw's, we get this with the word of, or the word for right here. Right about there. So, the SPJ may also include, as part of the special permit, specific conditions, safeguards, and limitations on timer use for each characteristic.
Yes.
Does that feel better? What do you think, Bill? Do you think that matches the intent that the zoning board's perspect- perspective was?
Yeah, I think it'll work for him.
Okay. Um, Natalie, you had, you had thoughts on this too, what, what's your, you think that works better?
Yeah.
Um, Jim and Annette, you've been following along, I, I believe, what are, what are your thoughts?
Oh, I agree.
Much better, I agree.
Thank you, everyone. I would say that's an example of how multiple different perspectives can improve things, I'll just point that out, so thank you, everybody, for that. I'll, I'll take every opportunity to, to promote multiple perspectives.
Sure. Now, Chris, before you go any further.
Yes.
You are saving this, correct? And it's something you're gonna be able to give to me to convert back, I'm.
The video's being recorded, Bill, you can go and watch the video later.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I'm joking, yes, yes, I'm saving this. I'm, I'm saving this, in fact, what I'll do right now, since we, I can put this, have to get out of this. Um, I'm gonna take this right now, to make sure that we're very clear. I'm gonna put it into a, oops, that was, that was privileged and confidential document, no one saw that, right?
We're all friends. There are no secrets here.
Not anymore. And I will translate this over as we speak, so we get it exactly right. So, first, just bear with me. So, findings shall consider review track changes. Finding shall consider the location, size, terrain, and the and the effects of the operations. This is activity. Sorry, everyone, I know this is not a spectator sport. Period. Comma after safeguards, limitations on time and use for. That's what we discussed. Okay, Bill? And I will save this for you, Bill, and I'll send it to you, is that, is that, do we have consensus on this?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will. That would be great. And if you send it to me, I'll incorporate it in the final, now, I'm gonna ditch, remember, all this, whatever we come up with ultimately now, is going to just be underlined, we're not gonna have any, anything stricken, because this is all new legislation that's coming in, everything else. This, the, the, the strike and underline was strictly for this board and for the public. But once I, when I redo this to get it ready for the warrant, it's all gonna be underlined, because it's all due, but we're not gonna have stuff that we, we, you know, struck.
Hmm.
Strict, struck him. That has been stricken.
That has been struck, um.
Can I just say, is, is this proof that this board, and maybe whoever Bill was referencing, is in favor of the Oxford comma? Since we put in that comma between safeguards and limitations?
Um, can we codify that the Oxford comma should be written into all zoning regulations in May?
I'm on board.
Bob, Bob, you better be, Bob, you better be an Oxford comma guy.
Oh, I certainly am.
Okay, good.
Something you were there.
Um, so, okay, last, so, any final thoughts on this, any final comments? Do we want to look at anything else before we, uh, close the hearing? Okay. I'll stop sharing.
Okay, so to be clear, I, I, because this was, I, Bill and I had some trouble, you know, putting this together, uh, because we found out that I had slightly wrong document. The changes that were made are limited to the paragraph that the board just approved. The changes, all the, I think it was, uh, made to the, what was existing, right? Because the reason is, because I'm going to incorporate those, accept them, and we're, as I said, we're gonna be done with strict and format, if the board decides to, you know, recommend approval of this.
So, we'll just, we can be very clear. I have this titled as changes to eight point three point six.
That, those are extent of it.
And that's the extent of the discussion tonight.
And I'm, everybody understands, I'm going to eliminate what is stricken there. I'm going to incorporate it in and make it.
The, the.
All, it'll all be underlined as new text for the purposes of the town meeting.
Yes, so it's going to look like that.
That's correct, without, but, in the same color, it will all be.
Of course.
Right, right.
Hmm.
Good, that, but that's, those are the extent of the changes, all right, great.
For, for tonight's discussion.
And, and are we also thinking about, you know, the other handful of little word changes, you know, changing the the word visitor to patron, and stuff like that, that we talked about at the intro, I mean, there were literally single word changes.
Those changes all sounded good to me.
Unless I hear someone that negates that, um, I'm, I'm assuming everyone is aligned with the changes that are being proposed, that are already shown and discussed. Okay. Okay, Bill, just an answer to that, does that clarify?
Yep. We're going with version twenty, incorporated the changes that were made that you're gonna send to me, um, and then we will have our final product.
Uh, I'm happy to entertain a motion to close the hearing.
But move.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the hearing, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Um, without further discussion, I'll do roll call uh, on the motion to close this hearing.
Oh, wait, we do have pub, we have the public, you might wanna.
I closed public, public comments, um, last meeting.
Got it.
Yeah, we already took, we did two meetings of public comment, and this was reserved simply for, um, the finals, the final changes based on the committee work. So, I'll take roll call to close the hearing, Jim.
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw.
Yes.
Bob Brown.
Yes.
Natalie Robert.
Yeah.
And I'm also, yes, so that's five zero to close the hearing. Um, Bill Crenshaw, thank you for all the effort you've put into this, and please, um, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best to join the next zoning board hearing, I'd like to also thank that team has, who has put in tremendous effort as well. Um, shall we move to meeting minutes?
Well, do you, is the board ready to, uh, close this and recommend approval to the town meeting?
Oh, sorry, um, yes, please, please, please elaborate, Bill, what's, what else is needed on this?
We have three, uh, I'm sorry, we have four items uh, connected with the home, accessory home-based business activity. The, this board's, uh, hearings, the goal is to recommend or not recommend approval to the vote, you know, for the vote of the town meeting. So, in this case, um, we have, we created section eight point three, which is the new, um, accessory home-based business activity section. We revised section three point one point two, table A, use regulations. We revised section three point two, which are accessory uses, and we revised section six point one point five, table C, parking space requirements. So, what I would request from this board, um, the only ones we've been working on for the last couple of meetings have been section eight point three, but I would request that the board, um, determines if they will recommend approval of the amendments, and, uh, we can number those out. But, and then I, because statute requires me to make a, um, well, actually, the board to make a, 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 a report to the town meeting, which could be verbal or, uh, written, uh, and you're recommending approval or disapproval. So, the vote would be, if the vote, if the board chooses, uh, the vote would be to, you know, create section eight point three, revise section three point one point two, require, re- revise section three point two, and revise sections six point one point five as, uh, discussed in hearings. And then I could go from there.
Bill Crenshaw, would you like to try to make that motion?
Yeah, I give it a shot, um. I motion that we approve, uh, revisions in section six point one point five, table C, uh, in section three point two, section three point one point two A, as discussed in our hearings, and also the, uh, addition of a new section eight point three is discussed in our hearing, and, uh, advanced them as articles for town meeting and recommend approval.
I'll check on that.
Um, okay, we'll take roll call, um, Jim?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, so Bill, it's five zero, uh, as, as per the motion. So, uh, next, you mentioned though, that, uh, a narrative or, um, a report needs to be provided to select board or to town meeting.
Town meeting.
Is, is that something we need to discuss tonight, or is that something that I can work with you and say, Bill Crenshaw offline to?
Yeah, I'll draft it, I'll draft it, um, and I'll send it around, and then you can, you know, tweak as you want.
And then, essentially, I, I do want the boards and, and put on that too, Bill, so we're happy to send it to me first, just for review, but, um, I think it's, if it's appropriate.
It's appropriate, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's basically designed to be a condensed version, you know, of what we've done and what we're recommending, um.
When does that need to be submitted to to town?
A week before.
Okay, so we have.
But I mean, I, I, I would like that. Right, I would like to get it over with.
Yeah, yeah, let's close up, bye. Okay, anything else on this one, Bill Nemser?
No. The only thing left on the agenda would be the two mini meeting minutes.
Okay, um, let's. Does everyone have, has everyone had a chance to review meeting minutes or have access to them now? Um, let's take the January twenty fourth meeting minutes first. Are there any comments on the January twenty fourth meeting minutes? I'm, I'm happy to take a motion.
A motion for.
I'll second it. Um, all in favor by roll call? Um, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, so it's five zero, Bill, to approve the minutes from January twenty fourth.
Okay.
Um, next set of minutes are from February fourteenth. Any comments?
I have a couple.
What?
Um, so, the paragraph that begins, there was a lengthy discussion with the parking and the fire lane. The second sentence is both a private property, and I, you know, my, my recollection is that part of the fire lane is on town property, so I would delete that sentence.
Hey, hang on, Bob, I'm gonna open it for a quick here. So, let me show you. Um. Okay, I'm sorry, Bob, which, it was, um, what, what?
Page. There was the paragraph that begins with, there was a lengthy discussion.
Yeah, okay.
That second sentence, both are private property. But the fire lane part under town property.
I see. Got it.
Right, so we'll straighten that sentence. And. My, my second one was a, a comment. Um. I wanna be sure that we are using the proper terminology, so I really wanna. Bill, you maybe, Bill Crenshaw, you may be able to help out us with this. Are we supposed to say handicap parking, or do we call it accessible parking today?
That's a good question. I was wondering about that.
Um, I'm wondering the bigger picture, I thought it wasn't even a part of it anymore.
Yeah, cause.
For real, but, you know, if. Well. If we're, if we're referencing it, what they propose, I would. Use the word handicap, cause it's, does not meet the definition of accessible.
Okay. And then just like among us, like going forward, would it be appropriate for us to talk in terms of accessible parking? Instead of.
Well, that's a good question, Bob, and because I was thinking, I was, I was kind of wondering about that because. Then I thought, well, it's not accessible. It was, you know, and then I saw, I threw in disabled, and I was like, no, that's not good anymore, I don't. But it, but wouldn't accessible mean that it was accessible, like? By the uh statute?
Yeah, it, it's kind of funny, cause if you were talking on a federal level, you would always say the word accessible. But Massachusetts is kind of weird, because they reference handicap and disabled placards is. What they use, and so those are the words Massachusetts often uses, but. Most of the time you just use accessible parking. But I think in this one particular instance, accessible. Parking would not be appropriate because it's. Truly not accessible. From a legal definition.
Is disabled better?
I'm, I'm fine with the way it reads, I was just questioning.
Yeah, I know.
You were doing something that was not appropriate. So using inappropriate terminology for.
Understood. Understood.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But if that's what they used in their application, that's what we approved, then that. I, I just, you know. Wanted us to consider whether we're saying the right thing, you know?
Hey, Bill.
Yeah.
Can we? This is very. Small of me to ask for this to be removed. But on that first page, the, the previous paragraph to the one we were just discussing about the fire lane. The last sentence is Ms. Robert added that the laws of capitalism should rule as long as the business.
Yeah.
I feel like that's a pretty great concise sentence, cause laws of capitalism are not, can we just get rid of that sentence, because?
Yeah.
I feel like it's not a great sum up of what my point was.
Understood.
Okay, great. Bold color and sparkles instead.
If you want me to go into it, I'm happy to go into it, but I don't think that's appropriate for the minute.
Okay, that's out. Those two are, I made that amendment.
I, I, I think. Natalie, you could submit. A rebuttal to the meeting minutes to be included with the set of meetings that explains that sentence in great detail.
I, I will be submitting those in time for the next meeting, it'll be great.
I mean, I made those changes.
Uh, yeah, it, I agree, that doesn't. That's not addressing. The nature of Natalie's comments, so.
Yeah.
And it's gone, it doesn't, doesn't add to the. Effect of the decision, so.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments on this meeting minutes? Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from. February fourteenth.
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor by voice roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, that's five zero to approve the meeting minutes from February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
There you go.
Uh, so I'm happy to take a planner update. Bill Nester? Unless there's any members of the board that would like to provide general updates or thoughts. At all. No. Okay, Bill?
I don't have anything new, I mean, I, I've kept you guys, I, with my flurry of emails. Uh, the last two weeks, I think you're up on pretty much everything. Um. We really don't have, I don't have any report except that this is Megan's last week, very sorry to see it, happy for her, you know, the. The, um. The drill, but um, so we are hoping for. You know, to, to move on, uh, Megan, if you remember, was uh. Started as a member of the planning board. So that was pretty good. Pretty good all around, um.
We'll get her, we'll get her back, we'll get her back, it's okay.
Oh, I've got plans, oh, yeah, yeah.
Not, not this planning board, th- this is the. I don't want to make any changes to the planning board.
No, no, not the planning board, oh, no. Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Okay, good.
Not getting out of my clutches, uh.
So, Bill, can I ask, um, about the uh trade shop? Zoning by law, are we on schedule to make the town meeting deadlines for?
Indeed, 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 we are. And we're having it now, oh, that's, that's good point, Bill. Uh, yes, it's on uh the agenda for next uh, next meeting, which is uh, March fourteenth. Um.
Or wait, is it going to the select board this coming?
Already went, it's done.
Already went, okay. Okay.
You guys asked me to do it two weeks ago, come on, it's done.
So it's coming to us in two weeks back here?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, that's the good noise, the good, but the bad news. Well, maybe good for you, is that I'm on vacation on the next meeting. Julia will be. In the vicinity of. Town hall, but she's. Got another meeting or something going on at the same time. So the, the agenda is. It features two things. It will be, um. We are having a, um. Oh, what, there's one new item, uh, the trade shop, and what was the other thing? There is a. A minor item. I got, it escapes me at the moment, but, um. There's a. I guess a, a slim possibility, you may be unsupervised for a while, so that you should seize that opportunity to talk about my contract and how it is a. Disgrace and should be brought up or whatever you want to do, but I won't be there. Uh, and then I'll be back on the following one, so.
Come up with all types of motions to make.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be good, behave, behave. But, um, I think that, uh, uh, Julia will be in and out. On that one. I, Zoe's gonna get you set up. We already have that. Um. So it should work out great, but, um. Uh, there's, you know, it's, it's a very light agenda deliberately, oh, I know, I know, um. I think it is a determination of major or minor. That is supposed to come in, so something, you know, nothing of any. Depth, I don't think, I think it's pretty basic stuff. So it'll be like the good old days before you had a planner.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm gonna jump back to the, the article, do we absolutely know the deadline for submitting articles to town meeting?
Yeah, we do, it's on the, it, it hasn't changed, it's on the calendar I sent out. Um.
The date.
I don't know.
Or after our next meeting.
Well, let's look at it right now. I will pull it up and. It is.
By the way, you can't find it on the new website.
Well, you know. Let's see here, where is the calendar here? Bear with me one minute. Didn't. I put it here, I think I did. Oh, all right, well, that's not good. Um. Well. I think. Before I even put this in. A matter of fact, I'm certain, um. We referenced the calendar, I just need a minute to find it. Um, I don't think. I don't think it, um. We were close at all, I think we were fine. But. And it's already been advertised. So, um.
Advertising is totally different than putting it on the warrant.
Than what?
It's totally different than putting it on the warrant. I'm concerned that. We might not make the warrant deadline.
Well. Remember, um. The warrant can be really done the day. It's been done the day of, it's not the proper way to do it, but it is, it stands up.
No, the charter sets a deadline for submitting articles. To the warrant. I'm just.
Here's the deal.
I got it.
That day happens after our next meeting.
Got it.
Thank you. I sent it out, I just gotta find it.
I got it.
Okay. Oh, there it is.
Let me, let me, let me, um. Let me blow it up, hold on. Took me a while, Bill sends me lots of emails.
Deadline March.
Citizens.
Yeah, well, it's also illegal for any article, but. So. I'm suggesting we should act tonight to submit. Uh, those, um. Trade show, trade shop articles. And if we have to amend them at town meetings, it'll be, but. If we don't do it before March ten, we can't get it on the, in, on town meeting.
I. But these are citizens, Bill.
I know, I know, but. It's a misinterpretation of the actual charter. From somebody who just spent eighteen months in the charter review committee. So the, the legal deadline for the town charter is any article. Has to be by March ten, however. It doesn't matter if it's March ten or Feb twenty-eight, we gotta act tonight.
Well, how can we act tonight if it wasn't advertised?
Well, weren't, the hearing's different from submitting an article. Okay, we submit an article.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying, oh.
Totally different process.
Uh, we already advertised the hearings for all that.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's, oh, I see what Bill's saying, yeah, I think that's a good idea, okay.
Bill, are you able?
The hearing may well be that the article wording changes, which is fine.
Yeah, the article is, I mean, it's, it's a mi, it's very minor, as you know. Um, okay, well, whatever the, I understand, I am.
Can you, Bill, Nems, are you able to share? That article with us then, so we can review it?
Sure. Let me get it going here. Um, it is. Let's see here. Um. Yeah, uh, Bill, Bill has been on the charter review committee and I, um.
Changes are like two lines, so it's pretty easy.
No, I, I got it. Yeah. All right, let's see if I could get this, what are my changes? Draft bylaws. Everything's running very slow tonight, as is always the case when you. Are trying to get somewhere, yeah. Wow. All right. Okay, I'm gonna share now, okay, are you? Chris, I could share there, you got it?
Go ahead.
Okay, you guys there? You see draft bylaws? Are you in my?
I see your, I see your folder file structure.
Pretty cool, huh?
What's, what's Douglas Bill mean?
That's a little bit, uh, serious.
Let's see, um, draft bylaws. But golly, it's going slow.
You wanna just get what you sent to the select board?
You all, no. That's what I'm trying to do, I can't.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, I have a, a nice. Okay. Trade shop, there we go. But look, oh my God, is it going slow? The kids are playing video games, that's what it is. Okay. Um. There we go, all right. So we did two things, we did a, a change. To the table itself. Which will open up in the next. Two hours. And then we did, we did the, um. New definition, which is unbelievable. Okay. Feast your eyes.
The anticipation is.
Is this very, very funny to anyone else, cause I'm just shy over here?
So what we did was that we. Are allowing the trade shop. Um, we didn't want to unintentionally derail Rick's. Um. Definitions. For a trade shop in business districts and things like that. Which was a, a term that he used. So the only difference here is that in the HCI. It is Board of Appeals. And the reason is, um. That a lot of those uses. Uh, in the HCI. Are already and not knowing exactly.
Bill, is he displaying something for you, cause right now, I'm just still watching a wheel turn around.
Oh, you can't see it?
No, we can only see your folder file structure.
Oh, no, it's up, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm having a problem with connection, I'm.
I'm, I'm still waiting for you to click on Douglas Bill.
Oh, God. All right, let's try it again. No, I, I had the whole thing going, but it, it's slow as, uh. A little bit slow, it's like. Oh. Can you see that now?
No.
It's no.
Do I, do I have to VPN to your computer, Bill?
No, but I, I'm, I'm kind of wondering if everybody's. Let's see here.
Give me, give me your IP address, I'm gonna break into your.
You're not getting my IP address.
Playing a practical joke, I wouldn't be laughing this hard, I have a very good poker face. There you go.
Yay.
All right, there it is. Yeah, oh, I thought you guys were looking at it the whole time, this is.
That, that was not worth the anticipation.
I never, I, I didn't value who this one. That was, that's. So the difference, the HCI, uh, because, um. You know, not knowing exactly what would be appropriate for the mill. Uh, if you have a, you know, different types of trade shops, so that's what we have. Why are they all underlined, they're all underlined now because. If not, um. This is a new, uh, a new category, originally. What caused a lot of confusion. Um, was that trade shop was listed under, uh. Accessory and other uses. And that was. Problematic, so now we've just located it under. Business uses, and that's why everything's underlined. So.
And, and to be clear, this is the only item that's under. For business uses.
That's under what?
Is this row being added to, so is this the complete table?
Oh, no, no, this is just the item that's being added to the existing table.
Right. Do we need to, do we need to asterisk that, or is it, is this?
No, we've never done that before, okay, we haven't done that before.
Okay.
Uh, there's no reason to put two hundred uses under there, you know, so.
Understood.
And I will clarify that, what I do is I clarify that in the warrant where it has, it says add this to the existing use of tables, you know?
Thank you.
And then we'll put Y in, there's a little remark. Now, the second one.
Any, sorry, any, any comments on this?
No.
No.
And, and if you want me to bring it back up? Sorry. Okay, to the other one. Natalie, this is not funny.
We'll take, we'll, we'll take a five minute recess.
Here, this is it.
Sure.
Take a four, yeah, well, you could take a forty-five minute recess probably, okay, can you see it now?
No. You're not sharing your screen, Bill.
You guys are goofing on me now, I don't know, I don't think it's cool. You're a very, very tolerant fellow here.
There we go, yes.
Look at this. I tell him it's Hemingway.
Um, Oxford comma, please. Do we have to, do we have to re-advertise for the Oxford comma?
I'm a Cambridge fellow.
No, not there, a building, structure, or premise. After structure. After structure.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, there we go. They didn't teach that enough for you. All right, so that's, that's, and we cleared this with Rick, who's gotta enforce it.
Should premises be singular? Premises is plural here. And I'm thinking about parallelism in the language, building is singular, structure is singular, should premise be singular? Come on, Bob, give me something.
Premises.
Premises is.
Premises is right. That's an S.
FAU.
They did two Charles Oxford comma there.
That's, we call it down, we call that a, a, a fighting owl comma.
There you go. All right, any, seriously, so ser- serious guys, any, um, any comments, questions on this?
Right.
Okay. Uh, do we, and so I, I assume we need to make a motion, um, to approve those again for town warrant, just like the previous hearing we closed, right?
But with the understanding, just to be clear, that we're going to still hold a public hearing, and it can be, as Bill said, uh, rightfully so, and, and he's been like, as he's, he's working on the charter, so he would know it, but if there was a change, we could amend it on the floor. I, um, I do suspect that, uh, that this little, um, discrepancy was discovered with our charter review committee about the the dates, and it's absolutely correct.
I also think that should there be something coming from the hearing that the change actually might be able to be made before printing, but well, we're pressing a legal deadline to submit something as a placeholder, so.
Good. I'll draw the warrant up for this, uh, i- if it's, if the board chooses to endorse this, I will get the warrant up and in.
Do you need us to vote on moving this to warrant? Okay, so, uh, Bill Crancher, would you mind, um, attempting a motion on this?
Yes, um, a motion that we approve a, uh, an article for submittal to, uh, the upcoming town meeting with the, to, uh, changes zoning bylaws to add trade shop to the principal use, principal business use table, and a definition of trade shop to section eleven uh, as per the discussion tonight.
We have a second?
Sure.
Right, um, I'll take roll call, uh, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, and just so we're clear, that was a motion simply to, um, move these, um, articles to warrant, and then, uh, Bill, let's, when, when's a good time to schedule this hearing, um, ASAP, or can we wait till?
I already scheduled it, it's, it's scheduled March fourteenth.
Okay, it's March fourteenth, okay.
It's already advertised, and it's, as the board had requested it, doggone it, we got it through.
Got it, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Bill, you can stop sharing your screen if you know how.
I have other stuff. Okay.
Hi, Julia.
Oh, I'll be.
Hi, I just got off my training, so I thought I'd join for the last few minutes.
Julia, you have missed some hilarity tonight.
We needed you about twenty minutes ago.
Well, I bet Bill did a great job.
He got there, he figured out how to share his screen correctly.
Bill, we didn't understand the FAU comma.
Bill, if, in, in my world, um, if they're not making fun of you, they don't like you. So. Let me put it that way. So any other updates? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, um, we should schedule the, um, Maynard Crossing Spring.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna send out, yeah, first week in April, you guys wanted it, I'll send a, um, um, you know, the, the calendar invite with it, with the, the, what do they call it, the, um, where you pick the days, whatever, doodle pole.
Thank you. Um, I think I think up to two members from the planning board would be appropriate, doesn't require two members, but I, I think maybe better to not have a quorum.
Well, it, it's up to you, uh, if you want a quorum, we just advertise, I just throw, uh.
So we'll see.
I had a hearing, all it is, is literally just, I posted some forty-eight hours ahead, so you guys could, we could figure it out maybe on, online, if you want to do that, you know?
Okay.
Whatever you want.
Any thoughts on that? I'm, I'm happy to, anyone can join, this is obviously open invitation, but.
I wanna go, so let's do a doodle pole.
Okay. Yep.
Julia, I explained also that, uh, at the next meeting, uh, you're gonna be uh, you're gonna be on another meeting, but will be in the vicinity if there's a fire, so to speak. So.
Yes, yeah, so I, I'm finishing up my trainings, um, for, for my conservation side of things. Um, and unfortunately, they fall on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Um, so I've been avoiding them for quite some time, um, and I'm, I'm almost done, uh, I have three more left, so I will, the next one, it's on our meeting, but, um, it's six to eight thirty, or eight fifteen, uh, so I will have everything set up for you all, um, at Town Hall, hopefully we're back in Town Hall, and, uh, yeah, obviously, if there's, there's a problem, I'll, I'll just be in the next room, um, in my office.
Okay.
Anything else? Jim, would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I'd be very happy to, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, make a motion to close this evening's meeting.
Thank you, I'll second that, uh, we'll do roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, five, five zero to close, thank you, everyone. Uh, the time is eight thirty, so, um, much, much more convenient time, so thank you.
Good night.
Um, Chris, uh, please send me that, 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 your little, uh, your doodle there.
We'll do that right now, I mean, can you stop recording?
Uh, no.